I call the April 19th, 2022 closed session meeting to order. Madam City Clerk, would you be kind enough as to give the public instructions on how to participate?
Thank you, Mayor. This meeting will be a hybrid meeting. The public can attend in person here in council chambers and make public comment here, or they can view the meeting online at fullerton.legister.com on Spectrum Cable Channel 3 and ATTU verse Channel 99. And if they would like to make public comment remotely, they can log into Zoom at zoom.us/join or 1-669-900-9128. The meeting ID is 978-4219-1797, and that information and more is on the agenda on our website.
Great. Madam City Clerk, would you be kind enough as to call the roll, please?
Mayor Jung.
President.
Mayor Pro Tem Whitaker.
Here.
Councilmember Dunlap.
Here.
Councilmember Silva.
Here.
And Councilmember Zara is not here for closed session.
All right, and we will now hear public comment on any closed session items. I don't see any members of the public here in chambers.
Before we go to public comments, I'd like to add an item to the agenda this evening, if possible.
Mr. City Attorney, go ahead, sir.
We'd like to add an item that arose since the posting of the agenda and cannot wait to the next regular council meeting. It is an anticipated litigation action potentially against the city, and it has a cur date of May the 6th, so we'd have to take care of that issue by May the 3rd. So if you could agendize it for closed session, we'd like you to discuss it closed session.
Very well. And do we have any public comments on Zoom?
No public comments.
And we will recess into closed session.
You need a motion, a second, and a vote on adding the agenda item.
Oh, the add the agenda item, excuse me.
I move that item, I move the item.
I'll second.
Very well. Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Dunlap.
Aye.
Councilmember Silva.
Yes.
Councilmember Mayor Pro Tem Whitaker.
Aye.
And Mayor Jung.
Aye.
Passed unanimously.
All right, now we'll recess into closed session, and I think there's one bit of item to do. I'm going to ask Councilman Dunlap to help me with the lottery draw for the fireworks today.
All right. Is that the?
Yeah, it's a little ball thing.
Gotcha. When do we do that, later?
Do that now.
So when we usually do this, we have one person draw the names, someone else open it, and announce it, and then that may move along. This is the, I don't know if you've noticed, we have a different process this year. The Youth Sports Partners Group, that very long name, we're doing five from that group, and then we'll do 10 from everybody else.
So we open up and announce?
Open it up, and you can announce the name, and then I'll number them and keep track. It takes a village. Sorry, they're so stapled, but, yeah.
Oh, that's pretty intense.
Then one of these things, you can read through the paper.
Fullerton Rangers Soccer Club, number one.
Okay, that's number one of youth sports.
We need a big expand, that's.
It's okay if it's not for anybody. It's bummed ingredient. And only put one staple in there. I tried to make it easy.
You don't want to disqualify somebody because it's like ripped and.
We could do process of elimination.
Golden Hill, number two for youth sports.
There's only four more in there, you probably don't need to spend too much.
You gotta shake them off.
He's a counterbalance.
That's Fullerton Little League.
All right, what's Fullerton Little League is number three. I haven't heard any cheers. You guys must not be here yet.
There's no booing, no booing, no.
I know. We don't get, well, we have had friendly booing once, I think. It was a rivalry.
Nobody's asked for a re-lead puller.
Yeah.
East Fullerton Little League.
Okay, East Fullerton Little League, so the folks at home that are watching, this is number four. And one more for the Youth Sports Partner League. And then whoever's left will be in the alternate. Sorry, didn't mean to speak over you. Fullerton Junior All-American is Youth Sports, number five. So we can take the other orange ones out.
Would you like me to dump?
Sure.
Price Cooper Waterhouse would be happy with all that hands involved in this.
Madam City Clerk, I gotta tell you, I really appreciate the staple job on the folder.
One more. I don't want to leave anybody out. Folder's empty, that's all of them.
So how many were picked out of these?
And 10 of the everybody else group.
Gotcha.
I need a couple of zipper name for that.
Just start, yeah, I say just do them all.
Well, sure, I'll take these, and then how many of these? This is six here, so we've got.
Elite Development Academy?
Elite Development Academy?
Yes, it's number one.
Okay. Let's see. You've got First Baptist Church of Fullerton.
First Baptist Church is number two.
Troy Football Booster Club?
Okay. The Indians must be here. Troy Booster is number three.
OC Pacific Soccer League.
OC Pacific Soccer is number four. Did we draw anybody who's here yet?
Ah, here you go, Fullerton Indians Football Booster.
There you go. Five. You guys can have stands across the street from each other and do your cheers and sing your alma mater.
Break Every Chain Foundation?
Okay, oops, sorry, Break Every Chain is number six. So we need four more. We didn't draw alternates for the youth sports groups because there's only one other in the group, so we didn't need to do that. But after this, we will do the five alternates.
You know, normally for us UCLA Bruins, we call that the lowly Trojan. But since we have our, since we have a Trojan here, I don't want to be.
I went to San Francisco State. I don't get to have any fun with these rivalries.
Ministerios Profetico?
Yes. Ministerios Profetico, if I can pronounce, I get better at pronouncing them every year.
Sunny Hills Men's Soccer?
Sunny Hills Soccer is number eight.
Temple Beth Tikva?
Okay, Temple Beth Tikva is number nine. And the last for the non-partner groups?
Nuevo Comienzo.
All right. Oops, page错了. And we need five more that'll be our alternates. So if you could pick five more names.
Luck of Councilman Dunlap here, he's got the luck of the draw.
And these are the alternates that'll bump up to the permit phase if someone in the group has to withdraw.
Okay.
And it's not uncommon that we've gone through one or two of our alternates in the past, so.
Knights of Columbus Fullerton.
Okay, Knights of Columbus is alternate one.
Teres Chance?
Teres Chance is alternate two.
Sunset Lane Education Foundation?
Sunset Lane is alternate three.
Kiwanis Club of Fullerton?
Kiwanis is alternate four. And Drumroll for alternate five.
TH Center OC?
Yeah, TH Center OC, all right.
All right, that concludes.
That concludes all the fun stuff for you, sorry. Now you have to go to work. Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem. Okay.
I now call the April 19th, 2022 meeting to order. Madam City Clerk, would you be kind enough as to read to the public how to participate?
Thank you, Mayor. This is a hybrid meeting where the public can participate here in the council chambers and address the council for public comment in person, or they can view the meeting at fullerton.legister.com or on our government cable channels. If the public would like to make public comment remotely, they can do so via Zoom at zoom.us/join, or call 1-669-900-9128 and enter Zoom meeting ID 978-4219-1797, and all the information is on the agenda, which is on our website.
Madam City Clerk, would you kindly call the roll?
Mayor Jung.
President.
Mayor Pro Tem Whitaker.
Here.
Councilmember Dunlap.
Here.
Councilmember Silva.
Here.
And Councilmember Zara is not present.
And this evening's invocation, we're going to invite Pastor Jay Wu of One Life City Church. Please give our invocation this evening, sir. Pastor Wu.
Thank you, guys. Let's pray. Lord, we, God, we thank you for tonight, and we thank you for just the grace that you have over the city. And Lord, so as we convene this meeting, God, we pray for your peace, we pray, God, for wisdom, we pray for your peace, we pray, God, for justice to move in all areas of this city. And so thank you, God, for the council members, thank you, God, for the staff. I pray blessings over them and their families, and speak joy and speak grace over them. And so, Lord, would you guide this time? Would you be in the midst of these conversations? And, Lord, we seek your wisdom. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Pastor Wu, if you'd be kind enough as to give us a little insight into your ministry at One Life City Church, we certainly appreciate it, sir.
Yeah, so our church is near the Maple neighborhood. We've been around for about seven years, just celebrated Good Friday, Easter Sunday, so a little bit tired from that. But yeah, we've partnered with Solidarity, and we're kind of gearing up for some summer programs, and so been serving the community and the families in the neighborhood for about seven years now.
Please continue, good work, much success, sir. Thank you.
Thank you.
And I'm going to call on Councilman Whittaker to give us a pledge.
Thank you. Please rise. My hand over your heart, ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, and I'll call on our city attorney. Mr. City Attorney, do you have any closed session report?
We have one matter to report out that is regarding anticipated litigation involving JP 23, Mr. Puji Gala. The council has agreed by a motion, unanimous motion, made by Mr. Jung and seconded by Mr. Silva, to publicly deliberate the conclusion of that was hearings.
Thank you, sir. Do any council members have any X-Bar Day communications to report?
None.
Seeing none, we'll move on to presentations. I'm going to ask all of our council to come down and join me, Mayor Pro Tem Whitaker, Councilman Silva, and Councilman Dunlap. We are going to honor the Cal State University of Fullerton's men's basketball team. friend, Fran Virgie, in the audience with his lovely wife. And I'm going to ask Coach Taylor to come out and assist me in presenting these certificates of recognition. Thank you.
Congratulations, Coach.
Thank you, appreciate it. Congratulations.
Good to see you again, Coach. Good job.
Coach, congratulations.
Absolutely.
Coach, yeah, yeah, yeah. Give us a little backdrop, right, you can go face them or face us, you're fine right there.
I'm not sure I'm supposed to be facing which way, but, thank you. We really appreciate the opportunity to be here amongst, you find people in representing the community. First and foremost, you know, these young men did an excellent job, in my opinion, in terms of just representing who they are and kind of representing the city from a hard helmet and lunch pail mentality, just going out and doing the best that they could. And I will say I'm very proud of them, but super appreciative of you guys acknowledging us and not us, them, because it's all about them, and they are the future of everything that we're hopeful for. So we definitely appreciate it. This group that is here is already at work for next season. We're just getting out of workouts, and so they're trying to figure out how to, as they would say it, run it back. So we are excited about that, and that's good. Thank you.
All right, so we'll go ahead and get it started, make some introductions, and where do we want everybody to line up? Because, you know, we're, some of us are, I guess, vertically challenged, so, you know, we gotta do this the right way.
Behind us.
Okay, there you go. There you go, okay.
You want to read a little bit of this?
Absolutely. So we are pleased to honor the 2021-2022 Cal State Fullerton Men's Basketball Team in recognition of winning the Big West Conference Tournament Championship. Fullerton, this round of applause for that. The Fullerton City Council and all the residents of Fullerton congratulate you and your teammates for your dedication and teamwork to achieve this remarkable championship. On behalf of the Fullerton City Council, I extend our very best wishes and all of your future endeavors. Go Titans. So, round of applause. And with that, first, we'll have up Ladu Laku. Next, Trey Maddox Jr. He's not here? Okay. Who is not here? Latrell Wrightsell Jr. Landis Spivey. Not here? Okay. Jalen Harris.
Congratulations.
All right, so next, we have Grayson Carper.
Why don't we stand right here, man? We've got a picture of you.
All right. Vincent Lee.
Pause for a minute, let the good man do his job. And Abream Fanku Ibrahim, I'm sorry. Ibrahim Diambu, my apologies, young man.
And just one quick note, having been to a few Final Fours, as a spectator in tournaments here, there's nothing like being in March Madness, so, this is great for our city.
That's always a joy to acknowledge the excellence of a group like this. Tori San Antonio.
Tori, great work.
Congratulations.
Chris Walker.
Anthony Santos.
Anthony, great job.
And Ryan Hamm.
Great work.
Before we do the picture thing, gentlemen, congratulations, you are all now sons of Fullerton. Should you ever get a parking ticket, you make sure you call one of us. Congratulations, very good. Let's go, let's do the.
Hey, all of us are revocating.
We need numbers.
Should we get one with the president?
Yes.
Yeah, let's get one with the president, bro.
Please come up.
You just knock one.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Reminder of why my basketball career ended in high school.
Building off that momentum, we are gonna, we have the special occasion this evening to honor and recognize our outgoing board, commission, and committee members. This year, we're recognizing 14 outgoing members, and we want to thank them for giving their time, effort, and serving the city of Fullerton. I've done this before, folks, so I'm keenly aware of the dedication that it takes for them to be away from their families and take this time to make sure that they're serving their fellow residents and fellow neighbors. So it gives me great pleasure to recognize all of these individuals, a few of whom are in the gallery today, and I'll recognize them personally. But that said, I am very grateful for their service. So from the Active Transportation Committee, we have Mr. Michael Delgado, Mr. Miguel Alvarez, Mr. Rafael Avila. From the Investment Advisory Committee, we have Ms. Lynn Lauderdale. From Planning Commission, we have Mr. Jose Trinidad Castaneda and Mr. Chris Thompson. From the Transportation and Circulation Commission, we have Mora May Sanchez. And from the Redistricting Advisory Committee, we have Ms. Kitty Harmio, Mr. Tony Bouchala, Mr. Sean Nelson, Ms. Jody Vallejo, and Mr. John Semenera. And actually, we have the sitting chair of the Redistricting Advisory Committee, Mr. Greg Seaborn, as well as the vice chair, Mr. James Zira, in the audience today. I invite them to join me, and let me give, have the honor of giving them the certificates myself. Thank you. the audience. Sir, if you want to come up to the microphone, say a few words for all your service to our city. Please, sir.
Thank you. They moved it, yeah. It's a kind of an exciting day, and has some little heartbeat going to it also. My dad started Aviation Facilities when I was 15 years old, and I'm going to be 70 this year, so that means for 55 years, I've been riding my bicycle. No, no, I did that for the first couple of years, so. We lived, I grew up in Placentia, and Dad had a passion for flying, and over the last 55 years, we have enjoyed a relationship with the city, many, many different folks, many different airport managers, different parts of that, but our passion has always been for the city of Fullerton and its lovely little airport. My dad has written several poems about it, and one of them's on our wall down there. And we are looking forward to this transition, and I'd like to thank Brendan for his time and effort, and all the city staff for their time and effort. This is, this is an exciting transition, and we look forward to continuing being a part of the airport. We are going to maintain a huge portion of our lease and our hangars, and we look forward very much to being around, so thank you all very much.
So, sir, we are presenting this to you, Mr. Bill Griggs of Aviation Facilities Incorporated, retiring after 55 years of flight training and community service, sir. That's no small feat. The city of Fullerton and their Fullerton City Council and all the citizens of Fullerton congratulate you for your providing high-quality flight training to thousands of pilots over five decades, and having volunteered their facility for use by Fullerton Pilots Association, Explorer Scouts, the Civil Air Patrol, Flying Cubs, youth groups, and many others. Congratulations, and best of luck, sir. I'm going to invite our airport director, if he wants to come up and say a few words, he's welcome to do that and join me in presenting this.
Thank you. It's been a pleasure here working with Bill Griggs. As you know, the airport facilities are somewhat lacking, and the AFI family stepped up and made a place to call the airport home for all these folks that use the airport, and they've done a great job of it, and we're going to try and do our best to fill those big shoes in the coming years.
Very good. And then I'm going to invite Mr. Eddie Carmona down from Assemblywoman Sharon Quirk's office, Silva's office, to present something as well. All right, sir, on behalf of a grateful city, thank you very much, sir.
Thank you so much. This is above and beyond, so.
Hey, Mr. Griggs, I'm happy to present this to you on behalf of Assemblymember Quirk Silva. I read about you and your father all day today, and I got to tell you, you are a part of what makes Fullerton such a good city to be proud of, you know? So thank you.
Thank you so much, and thank you very much.
Cool, thanks.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, as we go into the agenda here, I'd like to recommend that we take item four and move that to be considered along with item 10.
Very well. Does that require council action, or can we just go about doing that?
As Chair, you so direct it.
All right, we'll go ahead and do that, thank you. We'll move on to public comments. Those in our gallery that wish to make public comment, please feel free to come to the microphone. Mr. Package, sir, good evening.
Good evening. Good evening, Mayor and City Council, my name is Tony Package. By, the last time I addressed you was giving input on the process of selecting the new district map. I was rudely interrupted by Mr. Dunlap, and he basically called me a liar and corrected me with his truth about the map committee members not being able to run. During the subsequent meeting, which I saw virtually, it was known that Mr. Dunlap was mistaken, and the committee members were not barred from running for city council. Mr. Dunlap was not present at that meeting. Should I be upset by his rudeness, or virtually calling me a liar, or that Mr. Dunlap showed he doesn't know what he is talking about? And that was, and was totally unprepared for giving a truthful response. We are all used to his rudeness, his bully comments, and unfortunately, Mr. Dunlap has demonstrated many times he is woefully unprepared for the city council meeting. That bothers me the most. He is not prepared, he is not prepared to prepare for the meeting. Find another activity for the first and third Tuesday nights if you can't get prepared. I am concerned, and more to come later, it's a never-ending story. Thank you. I'm concerned and appalled by this administration's lack of concern for the families of Fullerton. One of the many things this city has done in the past is providing city-community events. Now you have canceled First Night, a joyful party for adults and children.
We'll move on to public comments. Those in our gallery that wish to make public comment, please feel free to come to the microphone. Mr. Pakic, sir. Good evening.
Good evening. Good evening, Mayor and City Council. My name is Tony Pakic. The last time I addressed you was giving input on the process of selecting the new district map. I was rudely interrupted by Mr. Dunlap, and he basically called me a liar and corrected me with his truth about the map committee members not being able to run. During the subsequent meeting, which I saw virtually, it was known that Mr. Dunlap was mistaken, and the committee members were not barred from running for city council. Mr. Dunlap was not present at that meeting. Should I be upset by his rudeness or virtually calling me a liar? Or that Mr. Dunlap showed he doesn't know what he is talking about, and was totally unprepared for giving a truthful response? We are all used to his rudeness, his bully comments. And unfortunately, Mr. Dunlap has demonstrated many times he is woefully unprepared for the city council meeting. That bothers me the most. He is not prepared to prepare for the meeting. Find another activity for the first and third Tuesday nights if you can't get prepared. I am concerned, and more to come later, it's a never-ending story. Thank you. I'm concerned and appalled by this administration's lack of concern for the families of Fullerton. One of the many things this city has done in the past is providing city-community events. Now you have canceled First Night, a joyful party for adults and children. The farmer's market has been shortened by two months. The Poplar September and October programs are gone. No Fourth of July celebration, I've been told. In music and apart, another family affair is reduced from five summer weeks to three. The reason given is lack of staff and money. The real reason is you don't care about the families of Fullerton. Both these issues are controlled by the city council. The budget fiasco was Mr. Whitaker's legacy. Mr. Jung is the closing shortening of so many popular family events, your legacy. Do something, please, before it's too late. And by the way, what's the status of the FMC agreement funds? Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next public comment. Mr. Campbell. Good evening.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, City Council. My name is Curtis Campbell, activist for the homeless and the veterans. Today, I want to speak about things that I normally speak about all the time. The Fullerton Navigation Center, on behalf of the homeless, I think that we're still not getting what we want, because we have about three hundred homeless people on the streets. We gave the Navigation Center a million and two hundred on behalf of the homeless, and the people... No one came to receive the money, which means that they didn't let you know what they were doing. You gave away a million and two hundred of the homeless people money just for no reason at all. We don't know. I can't say what they're going to do with it. I didn't see anyone come here and speak for it. Again, the homeless have four million dollars from the ARPA funding, and that money hasn't been distributed yet. And then we gave a million and two hundred, a million and six hundred to the Hope Center. We gave that to the police officers, which I'm not very happy with because of the Kelly Thomas thing. I don't think they should have anything to do with the homeless. They should not be the leaders and leadership of the homeless, I should say that. We can work together, but don't leave the other homeless people out of this like you're some type of, you know, good guy, you know? We giving the money to the people who murdered Kelly Thomas, and I'm not happy with that, not at all. Let me see, Sharon Court Silva. Again, she has a lot of laws that she has gotten through for the homeless, on behalf of the homeless, but we don't even talk about that. We don't even bring it up. She's doing a lot of good things on behalf of the homeless, but we don't talk about that. We should talk about it more. OCTA bus stop? The buses should stop more downtown. Again, Commonwealth and Harbor. This bar, we're letting the bar take up the sidewalk, and we know that's illegal. We know that's wrong, but we still doing it. And we need to think about the public more. The public now, because of all the homes that we're building, they're going to need more transportation. The college students, Cal State Fullerton, they're going to need more bus stops downtown Fullerton now, because we just don't have anywhere to park as much as we used to. The cash-out card. The cash-out card is a card that can be used by the homeless to receive funding. I think we should take a look at that. Other than that, homeless, again, we have millions of dollars' worth of funding that, for example, the Maple Center, we could use some of this funding to work together with the homeless to fund some of these programs. And again, stop cutting out all this community, because the homeless have a lot of funding, thanks to Sharon Court, millions. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Ms. Maureen Milton. Good evening.
I'm again requesting, because June seventh is right around the corner, and November comes fast after that, that the city council postpone their meeting that day for at least one day, so the candidates can put their last effort into getting their constituents to the polls and doing their best for the election. It's going for the greater good and then putting aside the local good for just a day or two, because in many respects, especially where I live, the residents cannot, there is no way that they can mail their ballots to the registrar voters, because there is no mailbox big enough to receive the ballots. And I personally don't like the idea of someone taking my ballot to somewhere, because they might not like the way I vote, and toss it into the trash. So I need to talk to the registrar voters to make sure that all HOAs and apartments have mailboxes big enough to receive our ballots. So, but I am requesting that we do postpone city council for one day, so they can devote all their time to the election, because every year, it gets hotter and hotter, and it's going to be a hot one this year. So I thank you so very much, and I hope you do like you did last year. I would really appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Milton. Next comment, please.
Good evening, council members and Mr. Mayor. My name is Judith Kaluzny. I've been a Fullerton resident since nineteen sixty-four and lived and worked downtown since nineteen eighty. I was at the February sixteenth Planning Commission meeting, where the commissioners discussed the Florentine encroachment, and they all agreed that the public sidewalk should be restored. And then they directed staff to notify your council persons to that you should agendize this and address the issue. So it was number fifteen on the calendar on April fifth, and it was announced early in the meeting that the matter would be continued. It was not continued. It was referred to the city attorney to negotiate with the new owner, Mario Maricek. My question is, how did this happen? Who decided to take it off calendar? Who decided to send it to the city attorney to negotiate? And instead of, you know, deciding to remove it? The city has the authority by the November two thousand and four agreement, and that agreement applies to the current owner, and it says the city, just to restore the public sidewalk, can order the encroachment removed for that purpose only. I'd just like to know, it was this secret process for taking this away from public knowledge and participation? And it's just like the deviousness that established this encroachment in the first place. I think it's very shoddy.
Thank you. Commissioner Elsimeranda. Good evening.
Good evening. I'm here tonight because I would like to make a public comment in regards to... Okay, got it. Okay, in regards to Palm Gardens, the apartment complex on Orange Dorp and Richmond. So we have a lot of neighbors complaining about the conditions of those apartments. And it is very sad to know that there's a lot of trouble. They have rats, pesticides, they have like issues where, I mean, third-world country could have, and especially having and knowing people that live there is very, very sad to me to stand up right here and speak on behalf. So I would like to know, how is the city or what is the city doing to maybe help this residents, these units, apartments? And also, there's been a lot of complaints about homeless living under in the parking lot, and I mean, this is an issue for the whole state of California, but they are living under in the parking lot. And they have been complaints to the managers, and the owners haven't done anything. So please, I don't know, if code enforcement could do something, or if we could file a complaint, or even the health department. So if you could please direct the residents, how to handle that situation? I would appreciate it. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Next public comment. While we're waiting for Mr. O., are there any comments on Zoom?
We have no hands raised in Zoom.
Very well. We'll come back to chambers. Mr. O.
Hello, my name is Bernard, and I am a Fullerton resident. Mr. Jung, in the matter we are now accustomed to from this council majority, your state of the city was full of lies, misinformation, and even taking credit for projects voted on when you weren't even on council. It would really be nice to have the truth for once, like how you wanted costly vanity offices, gerrymandered districts. You cut public safety and public works staffing, used President Biden's ARPA funds to patch up some roads, but not really your policies on infrastructure, is it? And your failed attempts to outsource library services. The truth, sir, for once, the truth. Speaking of lies, Mr. Dunlap, you had the audacity to lie in public on camera about Mr. Beak just to insult Mr. Tony Pakic, who was critical of you and your redistricting. You also seem to hate being here, so I think you should resign. Go Bruins. Oh, don't get it twisted, you are not a Bruin. You're not even Winnie the Pooh. You are a liar.
All right, thank you for that. Any other comments on Zoom? We'll go back to that. All right, very well. We'll bring this back to council. City manager, do you have any communications or clarifications that you'd like to make? I know that Mr. Pakic had a question about events and the postponement or cancellation of... Is there some clarification you can give with regards to the one that's coming up or supposed to be coming up? The Fourth of July event, as to why that stadium issue that's involved?
Yeah, we do not have a venue that we can utilize any further. Again, the district no longer allows us to access, because they've moved on with a artificial turf and cannot be utilized. There's solar panels there now, and that's within the fallout zone of the fireworks, and so it cannot be utilized there at that location, and we have not been able to find an alternate location that meets the requirements for fallout zone requirements and is large enough. So that's the problem.
Okay, thank you. And Mr. City Attorney, do you have anything that you can clarify for Ms. Kaluzny with regards to the property owner on Harbor and Commonwealth?
Council has given us direction. We're now in contact with the property owner, and we're resolving that issue as we go forward. We, in fact, met this week with him.
And that will be reported to the public?
Absolutely.
As we come? All right.
Mr. Mayor, just a response on the request to change the November election. Your November meeting is November first, and the election day is November eighth. And so you're actually not on the election itself. It's actually a week prior to the election day.
Okay.
Oh, the June election. Okay, I thought it was November. Okay.
Very well. We'll bring this back to council again once more. We'll start with council reports. Councilman Silva, you got anything, sir?
Mr. Mayor, if I may, just before council reports, if I may, just, I wanted to ask about the Palm Gardens situation, because I know two years ago, was it a year ago, two years ago, we had council direction to do code enforcement inspection on that property, and it was ongoing. I don't know what the... There was supposed to be contact with the owner and access to it, and also other safety measures. So I'd like to see if we can get an update on that, please, and what is going on, because that issue should have been resolved.
Sure, we can do that. I'm, again, this is the first I've heard of it. Possibly the chief can give us a brief update.
Yeah, we did partner with Code and Community and Economic Development to do an environmental design report as well for that location. We had been in contact with the owners. Our piece was passed off to them, so I'll check with their director, and we can have something brought back to council.
Thank you.
Very good, thank you.
Thank you.
And I want to wish Councilman Zora his relative well and best of health. One of the issues that he was dealing with, which is why he is here now. So best wishes, sir. And Councilman Silva.
Just briefly on the Palm Gardens, this was an issue when I first, well, before I got on in seventeen, and we had a big old meeting and tried to resolve some issues. So it's ongoing, so hopefully we can bring it to an end. But as far as my other comments, I want to, first of all, thank you and congratulate you to the Parks and Rec Department and the Public Works for a great Arbor Day out there at Adelina Park. It was great. We've got a bunch of new trees going up, and kudos for the staff, the great job they did. So give my thanks to all your staff and the Parks and Rec staff. And then, what do I got here? Oh, and just the last thing, I couldn't read my own writing, just hoping that everyone had a great past weekend here, and was celebrating whichever holiday you observe, Easter or Passover, so hopefully everyone had a great weekend. And again, I want to thank and congratulate all the committee members, commission members. I was on there, and it is a commitment to take some time out of your life and attend these meetings and deal with some feedback. So thank you, and I know Mr. Seaborn's still here, so thank you. And is the other gentleman here? There he is. Thank you so much, Mr. Lira, right? Yeah, for all you do. And with that, Mayor, I'll pass up a ton.
Thank you. Councilman Zora. Report, sir.
Thank you. First of all, I apologize for my tardiness and congratulate the Cal State Fullerton basketball team and Mr. Griggs for what he has done for our community. I don't really have much to report, but I'm sorry I missed the Arbor Day, again, one of those things where it was unavoidable conflicts, but I saw the pictures, and you guys did a good job, so I wish I was there. And I also want to just congratulate the French Film Festival at Fulton College for wrapping up a great season this year. I got to present a certificate to honor them. It was their eleventh year, and they came back after COVID, and it's always important to acknowledge our arts and culture and our society, because that is something that is extremely important for all of us. So thank you for that. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. All right. Councilman Dunlap.
Sure. Just real quick, I want to make a big plug for Love Fullerton this Saturday, you know, nine AM to twelve thirty. You can sign up online at lovefullerton.org. Number of cleanup projects around town. It's a great, great thing to be part of, great day for our city. So hopefully you will come out and join me and join other Fullertonians in working to beautify and clean up our city. Again, you can sign up at lovefullerton.org, and that's this coming Saturday from nine to twelve thirty. That concludes my report, sir.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Mayor, pro top.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Today is a very auspicious date. April nineteenth, seventeen seventy-five, the shot heard round the world occurred, began the American Revolutionary War. Patriots at Concord and Lexington that exchanged hostilities with the British on that day. Today is also a state holiday in the states of Massachusetts and Maine, and it's called Patriots' Day. There's little of this mentioned in the media, but it needs to be observed. Second thing, and they've already stolen some of my thunder, but certainly Arbor Day, I thought, was a very big success. And this, you know, Arbor Day was established in this country back in eighteen seventy-two, and that makes this year the one hundred and fiftieth anniversary of Arbor Day in this country. It also marked forty-one years for Fullerton as a Tree City USA. Forty-one consecutive years, Fullerton has held that ranking. We have over forty thousand trees in our urban forests. It is a huge job to maintain those trees properly, keep them safe, keep them healthy, particularly in these times of drought. So I wanted to take a moment to commend our Public Works Department, and Meg McWade is here this evening, and... And Parks and Recreation, because I thought they put their best foot forward at Adelina Park. And Adelina Park, we had a good turnout, even on a cold and cloudy day, something a little uncharacteristic of Arbor Day. But some trees were planted there. They were needed because we recently had to remove some unsafe trees in that area. And the local residents, it's a very beloved park to them. So we want to see what we can do to get it back up to speed. I also wanted to point out that I was contacted by a friend who brought a few shrubs, they're actually small trees or shrubs, to be planted on our Arbor Day. And they were plugged in the ground near the restroom there on that day. And those came courtesy of the Consul General's Office of the Republic of South Korea. And those shrubs are Rose of Sharon. Some of you may be aware of that. It's a flowering small tree or shrub. It's highly esteemed in Korea. And so it's with gratitude that we accept that gift and that sense of reaching out to some of the important cultures in our city as well. And with that, Mr. Mayor, I will turn it over to you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor Protam. I wanted to remind our residents again to log on to mywaterpledge.com and join me in committing to conserving water and energy in the month of April. There's still time. You can win prizes for participating. I encourage our media outlets as well and our partners to get the news out. So please join our movement, join other Fullerton residents and I at mywaterpledge.com. Also, another reminder that this Saturday, April 23rd, is Love Fullerton. It's an opportunity for Fullertonians to volunteer on behalf of our community. You can donate blood, clean up our train station or trails, remove graffiti from our parks. So I encourage all of you to participate, join us all. I think all of us will be out there. And lend a hand. Let's beautify our city. Lastly, you know, I want to give some words of note. During our State of the City presentation, Councilman Silva advocated for residents to contact members of council and allow us to get to know them and vice versa. All of us here and our city staff are doing what we feel is best to comfort the suffering in our community, offering hope to those who are beleaguered in our city and finding justice for those who are afflicted. And dialogue, continuous dialogue, while we may not in the end agree, promotes our collective empathy and allows us to see the humanity in one another. Instead of amplifying the divisions and the divisiveness amongst us, that would suggest that we encourage our capacity to find common ground and build off of that accordingly. I just don't see all of us here are doing our best to serve this city. That said, we are all prone to making errors in judgment, speaking without knowing the full result perhaps. I don't know that it's a direct correlation or an equal sign to being a liar. So I would encourage our community to tone back the rhetoric slightly and try to be part of the solution rather than amplify the problem. Because change, real change, only comes through persistent struggle. And I think everyone up here on our council recognizes that. So I appreciate that. And we'll move on to the next item on our list, which is appointments. We've got one appointment we have to make this evening. It's for the Investment Advisory Committee. It's an unexpired term that ends December 31st, 2022. And is there a presentation you'd like to make, Madam City Clerk?
This is just an unexpired vacancy through the end of the year, I believe. You had one application on file for this, so it might be an easy choice tonight.
That said, I did want to ask our council if they'd entertain a candidate that had applied for other positions for this one. A business owner and resident in town, Mr. James Coe. So if you'll indulge me, I would make that nomination. If there's others that any other council member wishes to make, please feel free to do so.
Mr. Mayor, if I, if I may?
Yes, sir.
If there is no urgency, would this be pushed maybe to another council meeting? Just to open up and advertise this a little bit more? Maybe some people did not.
There actually is a meeting that's scheduled this week. So you know, I would like to have a full advisory.
There is also a concern as whether we'll have a quorum for that meeting.
Fair enough, fair enough.
You know, again, if I can entertain a motion for Mr. Coe.
So moved.
Thank you.
All second.
Thank you.
And just point of clarification, is that the person that applied for this?
No, I think he applied for some others.
They do have an application on file.
Oh, okay. But I misunderstood. They said that we had an application for this committee.
You had one, one new application for this committee. So in particular.
Okay, who was that? I don't, I don't see it. I must have missed it.
I should have forwarded to you and I wrote it down. It was Mr. Atwong.
Okay, all right. All right, thank you.
He also applied for several other committees.
Okay.
Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Okay, Councilmember Dunlap.
Aye.
Councilmember Silva.
Aye.
Councilmember Zara.
Aye.
Mayor Protam Whitaker.
Aye.
Mayor Jung.
Aye.
Passes unanimously.
All right. At this time, we've got consent calendar items.
I'd move the consent calendar.
Very well.
Second.
Very good.
And this will be except for item four, which is moved to regular business.
Right. Okay, Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Dunlap.
Aye.
Councilmember Silva.
Aye.
Councilmember Zara.
Aye.
Mayor Protam Whitaker.
Aye.
Mayor Jung.
Aye.
Passes unanimously.
So item four, we will deal with later on. I think there's a portion for that. We'll move on to regular business because we have no public hearings this evening. And that is compensation for executive employees, confidential and nonrepresented employees. And we have Director Manfro to make this presentation. Mr. Manfro.
Thank you, Mayor, counsel. And thank you for your cooperation in moving the consent item of the police chief's contract to after this item. So I would ask that this is, this is going to be item number 10. And if we could address the police chief's employment agreement after this item and before your item number 11, that would be most efficient.
Very well, sir.
So we do have a brief PowerPoint for item number 10. Thank you. And just by way of introduction, this item does follow recently concluded negotiations and contract implementation for the Fullerton Municipal Employees Federation, Fullerton Management Association, Fullerton Firefighters Association, and Fullerton Fire Management Association. And now we're dealing with a group of unrepresented employees. First off, I'll start with executive employees. Employees covered by the Executive Resolution are single incumbent classifications appointed by or requiring appointment by the city manager. The executive unit is not a recognized bargaining unit for purposes of labor negotiations. The parameters for compensation in terms of employment are set by a city council resolution and individual employment agreements that are authorized by the city manager. All executive employees are at will. There are a number of classifications, about 13 in total. Ten of them are currently budgeted. And right now, five are filled on a full-time basis. And you have another five that are filled with various part-time interim personnel. I would also add that although not technically considered a part of the executive unit, we are also discussing the employment agreement of the police chief. He is separately handled outside of the executive employment compensation resolution. And he has a separate contract that requires joint approval of the city manager and the city council.
Mr. Manfro, sorry to interrupt you, if I may. The PowerPoint is not showing, I think, or not, the slides are not moving. Was it supposed to be moving?
Yes, it should be. Do I need to direct you for each time the slide is supposed to move? Okay, all right. All right. So let's go back to the, to the executives. Great, okay, start right there. And then the last point on that slide is the, the last increase to the actual salary range or what we call the control point was back in 2007. Next slide, please. We'll also be dealing with confidential employees. By definition, a confidential employee is one who, in the course of his or her duties, has access to information relating to the city's administration of the Myers- Millieus Brown Act, which is labor negotiations in short. So they are not represented by an organized bargaining unit. The parameters of their compensation in terms of employment are set by city council resolution. There are 19 classifications within this unit, 16 currently budgeted, with a number of vacancies. We have nine filled right now. Many vacancies in HR, finance, and the city manager's office. And we are working to get those filled. Again, employees in this group are a mix of general and mid-management positions within administration, admin services, and human resources. Now, the changes applicable to these units are pretty simple. For executive employees, the only change is a 5.25% salary increase to all of the salaries within the unit. I would also add that the police chief's employment agreement, which you'll consider next, also has the same exact 5 and 1/4% salary increase. For confidential, nonrepresented employees, again, 5 and 1/4% salary increase to their ranges. There's also the addition of the possibility of a deputy director assignment, which would only apply if approved by the city manager and if necessary to fulfill the mission of the department. It's consistent with the Management Memorandum of Understanding. We've also got a revision to vacation conversion, which is also consistent with some changes we made to the Management Memorandum of Understanding, which provides a little more flexibility in cashing out vacation and not losing vacation accruals. Next slide. Lastly, for the fiscal impacts. For executive employees, for the remainder of this fiscal year, you have a fiscal impact of about 18,700. A fully annualized next budget year would be 96,800. For the confidential, nonrepresented group, for the remainder of this fiscal year, 12,700. And fully annualized, 66,700. And I would add that the fully annualized cost of a salary increase for the police chief would come in at around 21,000. And with that, I would recommend that you consider the resolutions, which would implement these changes. And then following this item, again, separate consideration of the police chief's employment agreement.
Very well. Thank you, Director Manfro, for the presentation. We will now hear public comments on this item. If there are any members in the gallery that wish to speak, please come forward. Seeing none, we will move over to Zoom. Madam City Clerk, anyone on Zoom?
We have no hands raised in Zoom.
Very well, we'll bring it back to council. I will seek council comments, questions, or motions.
I'll make, I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Second. Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Dunlap.
Aye.
Councilmember Silva.
Yes.
Councilmember Zara.
Aye.
Mayor Protam Whitaker.
Aye.
Mayor Jung.
Aye.
Passes unanimously.
Very well. We will go back to the item number four. First Amendment to the amended and restated employment agreement, City of Fullerton, Chief of Police. Director Manfro, I apologize. You had to sit again.
No, it's okay. I'll just clarify that the only change being contemplated in this employment agreement is the increase to salary of 5 and 1/4%.
Very well, sir. Thank you. We'll now hear public comments on this item. Is there any members in chambers that wish to speak? Seeing none in the gallery, we'll move over to Zoom again.
No hands raised in Zoom.
Very well, we'll bring this back to council for comments, questions, or emotions.
I'll move to approve.
Very well.
I'll second.
Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Dunlap.
Aye.
Councilmember Silva.
Yes.
Councilmember Zara.
Aye.
Mayor Protam Whitaker.
Aye.
Mayor Jung.
Aye.
Passes unanimously.
And the last item this evening on our list is Fullerton Police Department Policy 708, Military Equipment Use. We do have a presentation on this item. Sergeant McCaskill. Good evening, sir.
There's a PowerPoint to go with this. I'm Sergeant McCaskill with the Fullerton Police Department. I'm assigned to Internal Affairs and I handle our policy and compliance issues. We're here, I'm here tonight because of AB 481, which was passed last year and signed into law. It created a couple of new government code sections, 770, 771, and so on. And it requires every police agency to create a military equipment policy and have that approved in open form by their governing agency. So, council. Next slide. The Fullerton Police Department doesn't have any tactical equipment that was obtained through the military, through the 1033 program or Section 2576A of Title 10 of the United States Code, which was traditionally referred to as military equipment. However, AB 481 has changed the definition for our purposes. Under Government Code 770, they've broadened the term military equipment. And it now includes items specifically developed for civilian law enforcement and some items that are developed for civilian use and available to civilians. Next slide. Items that we do possess for vehicles, we have unmanned remotely piloted powered aerial vehicles, which are commonly referred to as drones. Those were approved by council back in 2020. There was a presentation for that previously. We do have wheeled vehicles that have breaching apparatus attached. Our Bearcat, we can attach a breaching apparatus to, which I believe pretty much everyone's seen. It is armored and able to carry personnel. We also have a variety of command and control vehicles, which include most of our supervisor vehicles. They've been modified for being able to direct public safety units. And we also have a SWAT van for the same purpose. We do not have any unmanned remotely piloted ground vehicles. We do not have any military vehicles such as MRAPs, Humvees, two and a half ton trucks, five ton trucks, or armored track vehicles. We do not have any weaponized aircrafts, weaponized vehicles, or vessels of any kind. Next slide. For weapons, we do have specialized firearms and ammunition of less than 50 caliber, which would include our AR-15s that all patrol officers are assigned, as well as a variety of SWAT weapons that are assigned to SWAT personnel. And we have specialized shotguns, both for less lethal shotguns and for breaching shotguns. Those are to enable us to bypass doors and rounds to go with them. We do not have any firearms or ammunition of 50 caliber or greater, other than the shotguns. We do not have any firearms or firearm accessories that are designed to launch explosive projectiles. Next slide. For less lethal options and other tools, we do have 40 millimeter launchers, beanbag rounds, rubber bullets, and special impact munitions or SIM rounds. Those are like training rounds. And the other items are less lethal rounds. SWAT does use flashbangs, tear gas, and pepper ball. We do have battering rams. Breaching rounds, which are called breaching slugs for the breaching shotguns, also used by SWAT. And we do have a long-range acoustical device or an LRAD that's for long-range tactical communication. And that can be attached to the Bearcat. We do not have a TASER shockwave, microwave weapons, not quite sure what those are. Water cannons, explosive breaching tools, or breaching apparatus that are explosive in nature. Next slide. We are also required by AB 481 to provide a location for people to lodge complaints or questions, concerns about the military equipment policy and to publicize our military equipment policy. That's been online at our city website for over 30 days, as have these addresses, the email address, phone number, and our mailing address for the military equipment coordinator. Thus far, we have gotten zero questions through any of those means. And that has been on our city website, our department website, for more than a month now. The policy is, the complete policy which has been provided to you is also listed at that website. And that, that is why I'm here. Do you have any questions for me?
Thank you, Sergeant McCaskill. Any questions from council?
Yeah, just a clarification for the public. This is a state law that we are codifying, correct?
This is a state law that requires, we ask your permission to have the equipment we already have.
Got it.
Any other questions? Very good. We will hear public comment on this item. Any members of the public wish to comment on this item from the gallery? Please move forward. Seeing none, we will go ahead and go to Zoom. Seeing none, we will go ahead and go to Zoom.
No hands in Zoom tonight.
Very well, we'll move, bring this back to counsel.
I move the item.
One second.
Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Dunlap.
Aye.
Councilmember Silva.
Yes.
Councilmember Zara.
Aye.
Mayor Proton Whitaker.
Aye.
Mayor Jung.
Aye.
Passes unanimously.
That concludes the meeting. I do have one other thing I did want to ask about. Madam City Clerk, the redistricting commission, we had asked for prohibition item for the members on it returning, running for council. If we can get this on the next agenda, it would be appreciated.
We can agendize that.
Very good. So we'll go ahead and do that. Next meeting is, we've got a budget study on the twenty-sixth, but the next scheduled meeting is May third, same bad time, same bad channel, folks. Good night.